So if we go into the preliminaries, we've got the new board members. And the appointment waters are there, but I guess this is old news for everybody, right?
Old news that we've got two new members?
Yeah.
How is that old news? Nobody knew John was going to be on the board, did they?
I was surprised until when I saw the.
That's news to me.
Okay.
Well, I'll be happy to resign if you want.
Welcome, John.
Don't even think about it.
Yeah.
Now, we already got you lined up for clerk, John, so you're not.
Oh, boy. It's a tough one.
I will decline.
Yeah, but John, you're one of the few people that know how to read.
And how to spell my name.
All right, so the agenda, let's see here. So appointments. All right, so I guess we could start with 2.1.
All right, cool. Um, well, thanks for having me, first of all. My name is Jessica. I'm the land use coordinator effective last month. Before that, I was the conservation agent for a couple of years, so you've probably seen me around. Um, so Townsend, I'm sure, I'm gonna assume you guys at least sort of have a vague understanding, but you know that this is occurring, the MBTA communities. So it's Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, is recently to have a zoning bylaw that provides at least one district in your town where dense multifamily housing is permitted by right. And that is based off of the commuter rail and other MBTA transportation. So for Townsend, we are an adjacent small town, I believe. So by the end of 2025, we need to adopt a new zoning bylaw district. So what I'm gonna have Beth do, assuming you have screen sharing, can you throw up that map, please? Because who doesn't like a good visual?
Give me one. You're muted, Beth.
Okay, I'm pulling it up now. Let's see. Did you give me screen sharing already?
Yeah, I'm working on it right now.
Okay, great. So you want the district map, right?
Yeah, the latest one, the June 23rd, I think it is.
Go ahead, try it, Beth.
All right.
June 26th, but that's fine. Perfect, thanks. All right, so let's keep it panned out for now. Um, so um, the district is, again, like I said, where some dense multifamily housing will potentially be permitted. So this, I should also disclose, I am not a subject matter expert on this. So if I'm wrong, please feel free, anyone, to interrupt me. Um, so the district should be located in an area with reasonable access to a transit station. So again, like I said, we don't actually have any commuter rails or bus stops in Townsend. Air is the closest one, and I think Shirley is probably the second closest. But in terms of accessibility to those towns, my cat just got here, sorry, in advance. Um, the eastern side of Townsend is a little more sort of commuter friendly, feasible wise connectivity to adjacent towns. The red that you, so basically what we did is we had our consultant MRPC create a map of feasible versus non-feasible areas. So the state came up with all sorts of guidance as to what constitutes a feasible versus a non-feasible area for this potential zoning bylaw. It is strictly just the adoption of a bylaw at this point. You do not actually need to build or develop any houses by the end of 2025. It is strictly to just adopt a zoning bylaw. So it could, in our case, it's probably going to be an overlay district where dense multifamily housing is permitted. So there's a lot of area in Townsend that meets the disqualifying conditions set by the state. So these are the red areas. So those are things like government-owned lands. So we have a lot of DCR, mass wildlife, town-owned land. I believe open space makes that list, too, conservation restrictions, mapped wetlands, wellhead, like the Zone 1 wellhead protection areas. So that's a significant chunk of town right then that is already disqualified from consideration for adoption of this zoning bylaw. The yellow areas on the map are those that are feasible to adopt this bylaw, but sensitive. So ones that have significant conservation values, like floodplain, wetland buffers, the Zone 2 wellhead protection areas. So again, those are, you know, okay areas, but we should try to avoid it where possible, of course. And so as you can see, that really limits. The white is the good areas. However, the eastern part of Townsend, along near where these blue boxes are, Districts 1 through 5, that is where, that is really the only, the white shaded area of town that is served by public water. That's scary. Um, and so you know, right then and there, we have very little area in town that is really eligible for an overlay district. So in the past few months, town staff and the planning board have sort of narrowed down this map to potential locations for where this overlay district could be mapped. Part, I guess probably where the yellow is on District 3, 4, and 5, that is aquifer protection overlay. And so part in the zoning bylaw, you guys might know this more than I do, but you cannot exceed a density of which the parcel is currently zoned. So that sort of eliminates the dense multifamily spirit of this. But one of the challenges that we're looking in, actually that our consultant is currently looking into is how, and maybe you guys can provide feedback on this too, at some other time, how two overlay zoning districts interact with each other? Does one supersede the other? So, you know, throwing that out there, I don't know if you guys want to have like discussion or whatever tonight, we can. I don't know if that's, you know, appropriate for a business meeting, but I'm always around too, of course, if you want to stop by. But, um, so the, yeah, the districts, like I said, are selected because they have reasonable access. They're near the commercial, Districts 4 and 5 are where, you know, the Hannahford, the McDonald's, the Dunkin' Donuts is down there for your reference. So these are districts are near commercial areas, the school areas too. That's the red right across the street from Districts 4 and 5. There's public water. Topographically, it is feasible for potential development. You'll see an area of white to the north of District 4 and 5, just east of Proctor Road. We were looking at that originally, and same with everything to the east of Wallace Hill Road. But if anyone's familiar with that area, the topography is quite steep. So dense multifamily development is probably not the most feasible use of that land.
It's also a rock pile.
Yeah, or that too, yep. So, um, the, you know, the current districts that are just sort of contenders, they're outside of historic districts. You can see it, just one of the local historic districts is right there at South Street and Main Street by Harbor Pond. So, so, yeah, so we've put, you know, everybody's put in a lot of work to this so far. Beth put in a ton of time, our consultant has, a lot of the town departments have. So this is sort of where we're at, up to speed so far. So the next steps will be to actually start drafting the bylaw language for this dense multifamily housing. I know there's a goal to have probably a 10% affordability provision in it. And, you know, just one item to note is that, as you know, zoning by, any bylaw needs to go through a town meeting. So this is, you know, it's a state mandate, for lack of a better term, but non-compliance could, you know, one of the notes I saw was that it's subject to civil enforcement. But, but most importantly, if you do not adopt a bylaw language by the end of 2025, we are, you know, rendered ineligible for the time being for grant funds from some of the big ones, the Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects, Mass Works. So for, you know, our small town to be ineligible for grants that can be, you know, that will be really difficult. So, um, anyhow, that's about where we're at. I don't know if I missed anything, Beth, if you want to chime in or if anybody has any questions, I will do my best to answer.
So you're totally ignoring any pre-existing uses that are on those parcels?
Yes, because it's, yeah, because you don't actually have to develop. Townsend's quota will be a minimum of 178 units. So the, sort of the smallest compact area that our consultant found that that would be feasible on with septic and, you know, utility connection, parking, all that, would be a minimum 12-acre parcel. So you know, yeah, you would, we would not have to change the underlying zoning right now. It's just an overlay for the future. But to that effect, also, we don't want to just give one large 50, 100-acre parcel all the rights to this overlay. So, you know, that's not really fair, first of all, to give one person potential financial reward for it someday. But, um, so we just, we did want to make a district so that there are options.
I mean, I've heard about this District 4 and 5 before, but it always struck me as being right on the river. Isn't that the worst possible place to develop?
Um, it's already developed, so I think because it is all primarily, I don't know where the zoning stuff is, but I think it's on a different map, because it's all primarily commercial through there already. Change to residential might be a little bit environmentally, I don't know, safer or softer. You know, a lot of those buildings went in probably before a lot of our planning and environmental regulations went in. So development would be a lot more under strict regulations this time around. But again, it's just an overlay. At this point, there's no requirement to actually build anything.
Yeah, that's, that strikes me as very weird.
So, yeah, and I mean, nothing's finalized, obviously, yet, but, um, but the, one of the things with District 4 and 5 is that it is in the aquifer protection. So, yeah, until we find out sort of how two overlay districts might interact with each other, those might get kicked out.
Well, you can design, I mean, you could design the overlay however you want, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, but it is aquifer protection for a reason, you know, so we want to preserve groundwater quality, so.
Yeah, I would think that aquifer protection would prevail, except that it doesn't for single-family homes. And I don't know what happens with multifamily homes.
So, yeah, so I mean, that's something, like you said, that could be defined and written into a bylaw, but.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're not looking, I don't think anyone wants to cut corners and risk water quality or environmental quality either. So we are, we really have put a lot of time into finding the most feasible area of town with the fewest constraints. But it's difficult, because as you see, you know, 1, 2, and 3 are pretty much it, so.
Well, District 3 looks really good, in fact, because you can't see it. So, if you build multifamily in there, nobody's gonna know, except for all the traffic going in and out.
Yeah.
But the ones with frontage on Townsend Hill, I don't know. That, you got Kickless's horse farm in there, too. I mean, that's that's a pretty piece, and it's got a nice view and stuff. So, I mean, you're trashing your scenic view.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, like I had mentioned once before, so for, in the example of District 2 or just District 3, excuse me, those are private, single-owner parcels. So, again, you don't really want to give all the power just to one person, obviously, so. But again, yeah, we do want to try to find areas that are most feasible, you know, to, in the spirit of this maybe becoming something someday. So we don't just want to pick a parcel and expect that nothing's gonna happen either. So, yeah, I mean, privacy, view shed, everything is important to consider.
Well, I think that actually the single-owner parcels are better, easier to deal with, because then they're probably not going to develop them themselves, they're going to sell to somebody. And, you know, trying to, trying to put parcels together is, you know, can be a real hassle if you get somebody who doesn't want to sell.
Right.
Whereas, you know, with the single owner, at least you can get to first base in terms of owning the parcel you want to build on.
Right.
No, it's cool.
So that's where we're at. Probably a little more detailed of an update, if you guys are interested, will occur next Monday at the planning board meeting, Monday evening. So if you want to tune in then, of course, you're welcome to, or watch the recording after. But otherwise, yeah, I think our next step's probably going to be starting to draft the bylaw. But, you know, that can, that can get started while we also pick a location for it. So, um, of course, yeah, your feedback at that point is invaluable.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Great.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Cool.
So, um, I'm trying to think of what the second item was here.
All right, I'm gonna hop off, I have to go to conservation, but bye, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, so we have 7:20, is it anywhere near that?
Yeah.
23, wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing. All right, Ronnie, you want to, you want to take it for a while here, or how do you want to do this?
Sure, I'll get started, and Cindy Bounde is here with me, so she's gonna be presenting as well. I just want to say thank you for having us here to talk about the Community Preservation Act. And I'm gonna turn it over to Cindy. Cindy presented this to department heads back in July. And so we are gonna try to visit all the board and committee meetings and nonprofits in town so that more so people understand what this is, because it was pretty evident at town meeting that there were misconceptions. So anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to Cindy, who's gonna present. I think in your packets, you have the handout, Give a Little, Get a Lot.
Yeah.
So you should have that available to you, and I know if Cindy needs it, Beth has it to screen share. So Cindy.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so we're trying to, you know, get the conversation started and, and kind of the beginning of like an education campaign, we did meet with all the department heads, because what the plan is, is to try and get, you know, the town people supporting this, the town employees and board members to understand and support this, because it really is a good thing for Townsend. And that's what else, as Ronnie said, we did find at the town meeting, there was a lot of misconceptions about this program and how it works and so on. So, so to just go over a couple of few things, the CPA was signed into law in 2000, so this is a program that has been around for a while and is like hugely successful. There's also an awful lot of money involved. To date, 3.15 billion, with a B, has been raised and given out in this program in Massachusetts statewide. There are 195 CPA communities in Massachusetts. And including in those towns, Pepperell and Shirley have adopted CPA, Lancaster, Air, and Groton. Groton jumped in early, I think in 2004. And Groton, between what they have raised in surcharges and what they have gotten back in the state through CPA funds, is almost $16 million since 2004. So this is a program that has money and that gives out money to the towns. The other thing that happens with this is we are already paying into this program, but unless the town doesn't adopt the CPA, you can't, you don't have access to that money. The money is levied on surcharges to filings at the Registry of Deeds. So anytime a house is sold, someone takes an equity line, anytime, anything that's registered with the Registry of Deeds, there's a surcharge placed on it, the average fee is like $50 for a house transaction, that goes in to fund this CPA program at the state level. And then, so we're already paying into it, but because we're not a CPA town, we can't apply for money that comes out of it. Okay, so does that make sense? And like, am I clear on that?
It sounds like the state, all right.
It sounds like the state. Well, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of like the give a little, get a lot. It's like a savings account. You put money in the bank, you know, it's your money, you put it in the bank, you make interest on it, which I know, like, now interest rates aren't too bad, you can make some money on, and then you get, you get what you put into it back and more from the state. Each year is how they do it, all right? So, um, the CPA, you can use it to preserve historic buildings, monuments, structures, cemeteries, things that are significant to town. The idea behind the CPA was to preserve the unique character of each individual town and across the Commonwealth. So it's preserve historic buildings, create or rehabilitate playgrounds, public parks, hiking trails. You can protect the land that sits above public water supplies. And you can create and maintain workforce housing. As an aside, I think I should point out, workforce housing is just that. It's workforce, it's for teachers, it's for policemen, it's for town employees, it's workforce. It's not Section 8 housing, it's not public housing, it's affordable housing. Trying to keep housing affordable for working people so that they can stay in the towns that they live in without getting priced out. So it's to preserve Townsend, it's to enhance the lifestyle of the people that live in town. That's what this money is for, all right? So then, to get into the nitty-gritty part of the money, and how much it would cost to do this program, what was proposed is a 2% surcharge based on the assessed value of homes in Townsend. The assessed value is totally different than market value, all right? So it's the assessed value, and then there are exemptions. So for a typical home in Townsend, the assessed value is $390,000, all right? Under the CPA program, there is an automatic $100,000 exclusion from the assessed value of a home. So if you take a house that's assessed at $390,000, subtract $100,000, now you're down to $290, all right? And then you're going to pay based on Townsend's tax rate, which is, I think, 1529 right now per thousand. The average homeowner in Townsend is going to pay $22.15 per quarter in a surcharge on the real estate taxes. It's not an increase to real estate taxes, it doesn't go into the general fund, it goes straight into the CPA program. And so it's $22.15 per quarter, or $7.38 per month, is what the average homeowner in Townsend would pay to participate in the CPA program, all right? Another thing that comes with this, there are also exemptions for seniors. I didn't take out all the numbers in the flyer that you have, Give a Little, Get a Lot. It has larger tables. But for a family of two that are age 60 or older, considered seniors, if you make below $112,000 a year, you are exempt from paying into the CPA program. A family of four, using the same amount of money, it's $112,000, I think $160, you're exempt if your income is below that. So they're pretty generous exclusions that apply to this. So that this is not something, you know, I know at town meeting, people are like, people are going to be paying thousands of dollars a year in a tax increase in their real estate taxes. Number one, it's a surcharge, and number two, it's not thousands of dollars. This is what it would be for an average, an average homeowner, is $7.38 a month. When you participate in the CPA program, if it's something that gets passed to town and people decide that they want to do it, all CPA communities are guaranteed a dispersment, because that's the incentive to do the program. You know, you're not gonna put money into it and not get a dispersment from the state. You will, every, every town gets a dispersment from CPA funds. So the other thing that's interesting about this, the funds that you get, there's no time limit on it, so that you could say, let's take half of the funds and we're gonna put it in this account and save it so we can build up to do like a big project. Maybe you want to redo the Rod Iron fence around Town Common or something, or, you know, there's no time limit on it. They're not gonna say, gee, we're gonna give you the money and you have two years to spend it, or we're gonna take it back. There's no time limit on the money that's given to you, so it's kind of like a win-win. This is really, it would be a good thing, we would all be putting our own money into the program, but we will get additional funding from the state by participating. And that's, that's my story. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have questions, or?
Can I just say two things, Cindy?
Yeah.
The, the funds that you put in do not become part of the tax rate. So it's a surcharge on the taxes, but the monies that, the surcharge that is paid does not get calculated as part of the tax rate. So where, you know, you might have to go to town meeting to raise and appropriate the money for putting the fence around the common, for example, that would get put into the tax rate. Whereas this wouldn't, this is something that's separate from, so the monies are kept separate from that. And I had one other thing that I can't think of what it was right now, but anyway.
I have one other thing I could add to. I think in Townsend, we've been very fortunate that we have a very generous benefactor who takes care of Townsend for us. And, and you just don't know, like, you know, will that always be there? Will that always be something? And I think even just to maintain the buildings and things that have been given to us, this is why, I mean, this is kind of like a forward-thinking thing, that maybe Townsend can, you know, these are projects that we can do for ourselves, or we can maintain the buildings that we have, because, because you never know what's gonna happen down the road, you know? And, and so this is a way to bring some money into the town that can preserve the character and the uniqueness of Townsend.
Well, it sounds good.
Any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
So now this has to go through a town meeting.
So now this has to go through a town meeting, correct?
Yes.
And that, that's always been the problem, because, uh, we have so many people at town meeting who don't want to pay taxes at all, that'll, um, assert.
There are two routes. It needs to be got, it needs to be placed on a ballot, um, for a vote. And so the town meeting vote, the question is whether or not to put it on the ballot. The other option, which is a viable option, is to petition it to be put on a, um, on a, uh, vote. You know, so it need a, a ballot vote. So you need to have the ballot vote to, but to get it on the ballot, you need either a town meeting vote saying, yes, we want this on the ballot, or you need to petition it as a ballot question.
Okay.
And which way the town goes will be determined farther down the road. The ballot that makes sense to target is the presidential election in November, because more people will vote in that, and will get a bigger, um, bigger response from the people in town. A more overall response, and if it's just on a local ballot in April.
So, how many signatures roughly on a, on a ballot petition?
Five percent of the registered voters in town.
Which is...
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
That's like two or three thousand, I think.
Yeah.
I was going to say like thirty-five hundred or so. It's very average, so.
But if you go that route, you have the opportunity to talk to people about it, and you have the opportunity to gain support for it. So...
It's gonna, it's gonna take a real campaign, that's for sure.
Yes. That's why we're targeting.
This is the beginning.
The election a year. And this is the beginning. Um, we're also hoping to get a committee to, um, bring it forward, because right now, it's the Affordable Housing Trust that is, which is Cindy and I are both on that. Um, we're the ones sort of driving it, because in order to build uh, workforce housing or to have money to, um, support housing in the town of Townsend, um, you need a, a means for that. We don't have inclusionary zoning here in town, so we can't get money for affordable housing that way. Um, we, the Board of Selectmen did grant the trust a hundred thousand dollars, but that is all that we have, unless we find another way to support it in Townsend, and this is one option. So we've kind of become the de facto committee to bring this forward, but we would like to have a, a more robust committee. So as we go around presenting to all the boards and committees, hopefully we'll find people that um, read through the flyer that we created, the give a little, get a lot, and under, begin to understand the reason for it. I mean, even for, I know at town meeting, someone said, oh, we have this affordable housing, but over time, it's dropped out from the affordable list, because it's gone market rate, because it wasn't sold as affordable. Well, the town, if we have the money, could purchase it. There's a time period, if it's being sold as affordable, that you have to get an affordable purchaser. If that time period lapses and nobody comes forward, then it gets sold at market rate. Well, if that time period came up, the town, if we had the money, could purchase that unit and then continue the sale without that time period in order to keep affordable housing on the affordable housing rolls. This would provide us with money for that opportunity. So, I, I mean, there's a lot of good things about it, and yes, it, it is um, a, a fee, basically, that people pay to keep the town community. Even what, what Sterilite gives us, the, for example, the playground by Spalding School, Sterilite provided the funds for that. But what they don't give us is maintenance funds.
Right.
Um, so, so right now, Kids Country, of course, is doing the, you know, the band concert, and they're going to do another fundraiser in the, uh, in the spring, but if we had funds that we could put towards it, it would be really helpful. So, and, and people who can't afford it, who truly can't afford it, are exempted from that. So, that's all.
Um, quick question on the workforce housing, does that count against our, um, DHCD affordable housing bogey, or, or is that some, something else?
It would be put on the, of, the list. Is it the list that the state is? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be built under chapter forty-one, then, it, it, but they'll put it on the list.
It would be any, well, this is a whole different issue. You, you're talking about affordable housing now, workforce housing in Townsend, which is different from the CPA. Right, so that's kind of a different topic, Bill, but if the, if the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust were to build something, the intent would be that it would be on the, um, list that's maintained by the state to meet the quota, the, the ten percent of housing stock quota that we are supposed to have, and we're at like three or four percent. We're nowhere near where we should be.
Sorry about that.
Are there any other questions?
I, I know, do you mind if, without being too direct of putting anyone on the hot seat, does this sound like something viable and something that would benefit the town?
Well, yeah, I think it would be a benefit. I just, uh, like, um, Bill said, we've, if, it's a tough road when you're saying, here, here's a surtax, where, you know, dealing with unitill, I mean, you know, yeah, you know, just, just, just throw unitill out there and people are already stretched. And just the idea, even though, like, for many people, it doesn't break the bank, for a lot of people it does, even with the exemption, so. Um, and those people who are going to be afraid, and they're, they're the ones who are going to be opposing it, and I think it, uh, it, it, I think you're smart to take the long view of, we're going to have to build support over the, over a longer period of time, so people are comfortable with the idea, and it's like, oh yeah, this is a good thing, maybe, um, might suggest, maybe some of the other towns, maybe if they can come in and talk about their experiences and how it's benefited the town, um, give their, you know, like, a live experience, that may help, be very helpful to, um, like, and try to get someone that's more democratically, uh, demographically, like Townsend. Um, because like, people are like, well, everyone in Groton is rich, right? That's going to be the stereotype, but you know, if you're talking like a Shirley, uh, it may be closer to, uh, you know, the, the typical demographics we have here.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know Pepperell and Shirley have, um, both just come on in the last couple of years. Shirley just came on, um, the, um, yeah, this year, you know, so, um, and Pepperell two years before that, but yeah, that's a good. And, and you know, I'm aware of that with Groton. I just, going through all the numbers and the money and the projects that they've been able to do.
I know, I know.
You see, it's like, oh my goodness, why would someone say no to this, you know? Um, so, um, so yeah, but you're absolutely right. We'll get some, some people that are more like Town, more like Townsend, and, and, and get them in, that's a good idea. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, it's Darlene speaking. Would, um, would the funds be, would, would, uh, like the library or the old fire station, would those be ideas for buildings that could be revamped or utilized or do something with?
Or maintained. I mean, we don't even have a fund to maintain those buildings, which is why they're in the disrepair that they're in. These funds could be used for the historic older buildings in Townsend.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be an idea.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Certainly a sales point.
I'd just be careful of the workforce housing, it sounds great and all, but you know, what we've seen time and time again in forty Bs is like, we're in middlesex counties. So the, the numbers, you know, we fall into Boston numbers, so a lot of times what we see is our housing already is affordable, and, um, it, it, it's just a difficult thing to do. We, we lose, like you mentioned Veronica, we've lost units. Um, so how, like forty Bs just needs to be revamped. I don't know why they don't change it. So, that's a hard, it's an argument, you know, and what do you do to solve it?
It's a sacred cow, Darlene, come on.
No, your town has to be able to purchase the unit to hold it as affordable until you can get a purchaser for that. And as far as our housing stock being affordable, that was absolutely the case until the pandemic. Right now, our housing prices have risen quite a bit. I know that's going to come down a little bit maybe, but housing stock in Townsend isn't quite as affordable as it used to be.
No, but comparatively, you know, to other towns and, and Boston, and, that's, that's what I mean by that.
I see.
You see it all, you know, you see these forty Bs that, you know, after the initial buyer goes to sell, people aren't lining up to buy them, so that's the point. If, is it really needed if people aren't lining up to buy them? What's the problem? You know, if we could solve these system problems, great, let's do more of it, you know?
It, it's the time period. You have like sixty days from the time you list it, um, to, um, to have it purchased in that time period. And I really think that it's that, that's the delimiting factor on whether or not you can keep it affordable. So unless the town, you, you haven't gotten a purchaser during that time period that qualifies. However, if, um, if the town were able to be the purchaser, to hold it as affordable, then, and then keep it, you know, keep listing it as an affordable unit, and you're essentially purchasing it from the town or the trust or the Housing Authority, whoever the owner is, depending on how the town does that. Um, you are still able to hold on to that, and it remains as part of your affordable stock.
What's the likelihood of that happening? And, you know, is that feasible? Because that's, okay, great, there's a solution, but will they do it?
Could, could I say something too? Isn't there something with deed restrictions too, that previous affordable homes were not deed restricted?
No, they always are.
Yes.
But the restriction goes away after a certain period of time?
Right.
Right.
It's the kind of basic, affordable unit.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh.
It's kind of...
You were garbled there, Bill, for a second.
Oh, okay, I, it says my, my internet connection isn't too good, but...
Turn, turn your video off, Bill, that should increase the bandwidth for your audio.
Okay. Stop video, okay. Um, the problem is it's an economic problem, because if you buy an affordable unit, the, you can't make any money on it.
You're out altogether, Bill.
Bill, we can't understand you. It's really garbled. Kind of non-existent. But anyway, this is, I don't know that it's the solution for affordable housing, but it's a, it's a way to provide funds for the town. To do projects that we couldn't otherwise do.
Yeah, what you're saying, Ronnie, is it's not a, the end-all-be-all of our problems with affordable housing, but it's another tool in the box to help towards that goal.
Exactly.
Alright, I moved a little bit, is that any better?
Yeah, it sounds a little.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, well, uh, keep us posted then on, uh, when you want to meet about this and plan. You say in November. So is there a special town meeting? Uh, no, that...
November a year, Bill. For the ballot.
Okay. Twenty-four.
So we got time.
Yes, there's time. But we, we are looking for people to support, um, we're probably, because we, we do have Affordable Housing Trust things to do as well, probably look for, um, the appointment of a committee to just be the CPA committee. We're really ad hoc, we're kind of doing this to get the ball rolling. So, and we do support it.
So if, if any of you are interested, you know, let us know. I'm, I, because it, it really needs support, and I, I really, I, I do, I, you know, I know everything's expensive and, but, but this would be a good thing, this could be an income stream for the town, you know, um, to help just maintain the town, to maintain the town. So, um, so there you have it.
So I, should I put out a number here? Are you guys interested in a number? The Community Preservation, um, Coalition did numbers for us. So the town, um, with the two exemptions, so they looked at everything, you know, our, our demographic information, our census information, um, the, uh, the town would stand in a year, just with the town's fees at that seven dollars a month rate, we would, um, have two hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred forty-two dollars in a year prior to the state match. Um, and so it, it winds up being a significant amount of money over time that can be used for all the reasons that are on that flyer.
Now, would the state match be that, that's a hundred percent match, or?
No, the state match varies, depending on how much comes into the registry. There are, um, in the law that put this into place back in two thousand, there are, you know, like, they can give X number percent of what's in the CPA bucket from the registry that they give out. So it, it goes anywhere from twenty percent to forty percent.
Okay.
Pretty much historically, that's been matched. So they match the amount that we put in at either somewhere in the twenty to forty percent.
We just have to issue more permits, because they all have to be recorded, so.
I know, I know, right?
Alright.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
So it's that time of year again. Reorganization of the board. So I can update the town clerk. Nominations please.
So what do we, uh, is it the entire board or, or just clerk?
Um, it's the entire board, every year.
Okay, so I thought we, I thought we had done Bill already back in June as chair.
The clerk is the, is the fun part.
Oh, did we? I thought, no, because we haven't met since May thirty-first, and I don't, I don't have it in the minutes that you guys reorganized at that point for this year.
Oh, okay, because I don't know, for some reason I, I just have this recollection, I thought we had, or we had forced everyone to keep their, their, their seats, you know, their, their hats.
I move for, I move for Bill to be chair.
Second.
Well, that's a big surprise.
Darlene says aye.
Okay. Got it.
John Page says aye.
Alright.
Vicki says aye.
I'm sorry, Vicki, go.
Vicki says aye.
She says aye.
Thank you, everyone, all in favor. It is unanimous.
Um, I nominate Darlene to be vice chair.
Second. Am I allowed to second? I actually can't remember.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Aye.
Do we need to do a, a round robin vote, or just a?
Roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so Darlene voted aye. Vicki?
Aye.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, so.
Thank you. Unanimous. The clerk.
I nominate Dave Finelli.
I need to decline.
Ah, bummer.
Just because I just have so much on my plate already with the TCAM stuff that I've got very little time to even give myself time off.
Okay. That leaves John or Vicky?
And John is gonna decline preemptively.
I move that Victoria is the clerk.
I am.
No, 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 we have a new member who's not here, and that's that that person gets to be the clerk.
No, he's an associate, so.
Yeah.
Be the clerk?
Nope. I don't think so, I don't know.
Will you take the position, Vicky?
Yeah, just what does it entail? I mean, I can't be Dave Chanel.
Well, first off, we have to bring all the other board members out for dinner.
Wait, I think that's against one of those conflict of interest laws of training I went through.
There you go, you qualify to be clerk, and you do.
Really heavy lifting, reading the legal notice.
That's about it.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, I mean, there is.
We have such a great admin, and it's hardly anything for the clerk to do, really.
Thank you, and we have a great land use coordinator, and she'll edit a lot of our stuff now, so it's great. She's a very good editor. Yeah, technical writer. Anyway, do we have a second for Vicky, for clerk?
Second.
Thank you. Oh, I thought you motioned, Darlene.
Oh, did I? Yeah, sorry.
Then I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, Darlene?
Yes.
Uh, Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. You want to vote for yourself, Vicky?
Sure. Make it unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right.
So much. All right.
Now, I think I spotted some minutes in there. Has anybody read the minutes? We lost our, our super minutes guy.
Yep, I did do a little more tweaking to them today. They're not long, but I didn't change anything substantive, I just rekinda redid the paragraphs and grammatical, to, you know, a couple of words here and there, so, if you want to look at it, it's in the folder.
This is from May 31st?
Yes, 22 Main Street was the public hearing, so most of the minutes are that. The variance, do you remember? Yeah, I can pull it up if you want, or.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Bill?
Okay, sure.
That ended up only being like a four-foot variance, wasn't it, or something like that?
Yeah, but it was also, as you recall, the location of the parking spot in front of the building. So it was a variance from both, yeah. So, yeah. Basically, the minutes were approved, the public hearing, so I just put it in a paragraph form, cleaned it up a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks good to me. We should probably think about that, that prohibition in the, in the special permit by law against having a parking place in the front yard. That doesn't make sense to me.
Hmm, yeah, it's, it's actually come up in, in another project, so, yeah.
I think it's.
In my administrator's report, there is a, more to come on that. More opportunities there. Bylaw amendments. Yes. All right.
Okay, is there a motion on the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, polling the members. Vicky?
Yes.
Dave Funioli?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Losing you again there.
Are you on the Cape, Bill?
On a boat. You're on a boat now?
Well, it's, it's, it's about as close to a boat as you can get without actually being on a boat. It's an RV. It's an RV.
Well, thank you for coming in. Oh, that's great, a Land Cruiser. Yes, yes, okay.
But I'm gonna abstain on the motion for the minutes.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay.
All right, so, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Is there anything else, Beth?
Yeah, I have an administrator's report. We're starting this with all the boards, all the land use boards, anyway. And I'm just gonna go through some things with everybody, just to update you, because we haven't met in a while. As you know, Permalink building permits are up and running, and I do a review of every building permit to make sure that there are no ZBA outstanding permits or special conditions on projects, and I reviewed two different projects, 19 Pheasant Ridge Road and 18 Shirley Road. As far as referrals, during the time the ZBA was not meeting, there was a referral from the planning board for a project at, it's on Fitchburg Road, it's between 92 and 96 Fitchburg Road, and it's the first age-restricted development special permit, that, the first hearing was on July 24th. Everything is looking good. There were a few adjustments to the plan, and the hearing is continued to August 14th. If anybody wants to see that application, I'd be happy to send it to you, or you can come in to, to the land use office and have a look at it. There is a stormwater management permit on, on file as well for the project, and that is being, it's a minor stormwater management permit, so that's being reviewed by the conservation agent. So as far as completed, yes?
Is that a multifamily project?
It's actually a one building with three units. There will be the three two-bedroom, one-bath units in one building.
So that's why, that's why you need the stormwater permit, because it's multifamily?
Yes, and it's a, it's a 2.3 acre site on Fitchburg Road, the topography is steep, so, but the design is excellent. I'll, I'll send you the link if you want to review it, but in that, that is, yeah, so that's going on. So as far as complete, uh, completed approvals that the board has already issued, you have the 22 Main Street variance, I just wanted to update the board that has been recorded. All the land use permitting for that project is complete, and the staff is gonna conduct a site visit next month.
Hallelujah.
Yes, yeah, we just got an update on the MassDOT permit, which was part of the site plan special permit. So that's, you know, in progress, her consultant's working on that. As far as 5 Ryan Road, some of you will recall, that was an affordable accessory unit, special permit. That, I just wanted to update the board. The, the permit holder has been unable to rent the unit due to a delay in implementing the LIP program. That's a state program, the Affordable Accessory Program. So at this time, I don't have any other update or status at this time, but that, that is a bit of a delay, so I just wanted to let the board know. As far as applications, 139 Highland Street, the new owner came in to renew their special permit for an affordable, I mean, I'm sorry, for an accessory apartment. And we looked through the file with town council and realized that she didn't need to renew it, because of the way that the previous decisions were written. So she did not have to renew it, and there's, they're not even using it, so, at this point, it's, it's good for perpetuity, according to town council. So a couple of miscellaneous but important things. As you know, we have Jessica Consalvo as our new land use coordinator, my supervisor, and we have Matt Metas, is now the conservation agent. He was the conservation admin, and he's now taken on dual roles as admin and agent. So, and also, exciting news, I'm sure the previous presenters would like to hear this, but we have extended an offer to a qualified candidate for the Housing and Grant Administration position, which means she'll be starting on as the admin for the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as doing, writing grants for the town and administering grants. So she will be working in the land use office as well.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah, so very excited. She's, she just came in today to introduce, we just got to meet her today. Busy office, but we've got a lot going on, it's, it's excellent. And just an update, Charles Sexton Duranian is the Board of Selectmen-appointed liaison to the ZBA this year, and there are till, there are still two associate member vacancies to be filled. Thank you.
Beth, I mean, my understanding is, did, we were looking for a building inspector? Is that right? Uh, what, what's the progress on that? Cause I find that that's a really important person that we work with through this process.
Yes, so at this time, there is an interim building commissioner, and most of the questions are coming right into the land use office, so Jessica, myself, where, we also, your town administrator Eric Schlegel is very well-versed in zoning. He was the head of the planning department in the city of Lowell for many years before he came here. So he's a huge resource for us. He's also a land use lawyer, so we have a
Okay.
Really robust group here, of people that we can, we work with, and we've been taking the calls and, and working through them.
Question, how long have we not had a building inspector? I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
I wonder so.
Really?
Yeah.
Don't we have an assistant or an associate building inspector?
No.
We have an interim.
We're not big enough.
Yes.
We had, we had one, and then he was, I think he was, we interviewed him for the building inspector job, but then he went to, not Berlin, but Bolton, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, so can I, can you, I, I miss, who's, who's interim at this point?
Oh, gosh, I don't know his name. Roland, does that sound familiar? Roland, I think he's also a Pepperell building commissioner.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so we're sharing again.
Oh, thank, okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah. And then there is, and finally, there's the Townsend Bylaw Review Committee being formed. There's some information in your folders on that. So that is part of the charter, and every year ending in three or five, the Board of Selectmen are tasked with convening a bylaw review committee to review the, and amend the bylaws of the whole code, basically. So, that is under correspondence, and if anyone is interested in serving on that community, uh, committee, they don't have the exact meeting dates and times set up yet, but the, the goal and the mission will be to review the existing bylaws and make recommendations for changes. So, please let me know if you're interested.
I already told Sabrina to sign me up, so.
All right. Exactly what I was hoping for, all of you. All of you.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Are we adjourning, Bill?
Have a good night.
Do we need to make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Vicky?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. We're adjourned.